Meeting is called to order. Pleasure for allegiance, Dr. Day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is item C1, agenda approval for work session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Just a question if we need to make an adjustment or not because item F2, we added a big bunch of policy statements this morning. I don't know if we need a separate agenda item to discuss that or is the heading for F2 that just says, "Not all of them are governance policies," which is the heading for F2. So I don't know if you want to maybe just amend the title to say, "Policy Reviews."
Let's make a motion to amend.
Okay, my motion is to strike the word governance from the title for F2.
I second that. Any discussion on that motion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Mr. DePaul.
Second.
Dr. Day.
There you go.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next one is chair comment and I yield my time to our esteemed colleague, Mrs. Laurie and Mrs. Preston and Dr. Day, three of you.
All right. We would like to present to Administrator.
Hold on, hold on, he's bringing his camera. Go ahead, Mrs. Preston. Three of you are doing it together.
We would like to present to you.
But she's on her way.
...and everything that you do for us.
We will hold on for her to come.
Carrie, when you see her. There she is. I was like, you're sitting there. This is for you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah, please come here. We'll make comments about them so they'll take.
Perfect.
Am I supposed to call in here?
Yes.
He's so funny. You're a person, eh? I went too long with you.
All right, smile. One, two, three. And do one more. One, two, one, two, three.
Thank you, Dr. Day.
And then we have one more.
Hold on, hold on, just hold on. Hold on just one minute for those two.
Okay, wait.
Yeah, his wife is on the way. I got 10 minutes.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
No, we solve from. You can leave 50 bucks from me later on. So what I'll do is open the floor for any comments. We recognize the services of Mrs. Day and Mrs. Cole. Maybe you'd like to come up front so the camera can see you. You know, you work behind the scenes, both of you, and you have been the unsung heroes of the school board and I call it the spine of the school board, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Without you, we'll be helpless and limping along. There's a lot of work goes between the meetings, during the meeting, before the meeting, and I've been on phone with Ms. Day since morning this time. When she didn't pick up my phone, I thought, man, something, did I do something wrong? Then she called me right back. But we appreciate, so I'll open the floor, starting with Mrs. Laurie, if you get.
Well, as a first-year school board member, I have found you both so very helpful, so very kind and just going above and beyond, and I just appreciate everything you guys do. It makes me understand how everything works a lot better with your hands on, so thank you so much.
And as a fellow first year, I really appreciate everything you've helped me to learn to do my job better. That might not be saying too terribly, but I know that I'm better off having you two in my life at this point than I would have been without you. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. You do an incredible job. You do your best to make us look good. Sometimes you don't do good at that, but anyway. But we try, and you do. You do a great job. You fill in all the blanks. You make sure that we're where we're supposed to be and that we're doing what we're supposed to do, and that is not an easy job, so we do appreciate you. Thank you.
And Tina and Carrie, thank you so much. I know the time and effort you all put into making sure that we are where we're supposed to be, have the items we need, especially on any types of trips or events, so thank you so much for making us look good.
Dr. Day. Well, just this morning, I communicated with Tina about making some, putting some of these extra documents on the agenda, and whenever I had to do that, I think, oh, poor Tina, here it is at the last minute, and I'm asking for more changes, and she's always right on the spot. Usually, within a half hour, I get a message back that just says, "Done."
Yes.
So I am really grateful for how prompt you are and how efficient at responding, and you've done the same thing for me sometimes, too, where I lose the Zoom link for something or whatever it might be. A policy needs to get to the appropriate work group or something, so thank you for you two. I don't, I don't think we could function without the two of you taking care of all those behind-the-scenes details, so really, thank you.
And so you see me taking pictures because I want to be able to remember and remind myself when I look over to the right, and I see two wonderful people that make our jobs easier. So I want to thank both you, Ms. Day, you Carrie, for all you do. You've always been a reassuring force behind us and it's always beside us, and it's always wonderful to have someone that knows a lot more about what's going on than me, helping me through these different obstacles and challenges and encouraging fun things we get to do. So thank you. I'm gonna miss being here with you guys, but I know where to find you, and we can go do some lunch or something fun, so, sounds good. Take care, you guys. Thank you.
This board would not be successful without you, period, so thank you for everything that you ladies do, every day for us.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
You two work as an excellent team. I know Ms. Day, when she has to be off, she says, "I can count on her," and it becomes seamless. You don't see any whining, complaining. It just seamlessly happens that you show up miraculously and you replace her, and when she comes back, you go out. So that's, has been very helpful. People don't see that on the camera, you know, when they're watching that, but you do do work behind the scenes. You manage all the meetings, the, you know, when the governance policy group meetings are managed by Ms. Cole, so thank you very much. We really appreciate everything you do, and hopefully we'll be able to continue doing that for years to come. So the next item is, again, going back to my, the recognition, so let's, why don't we start with the comments and then do it, right?
Okay.
So we'll be, we'll be missing two of our colleagues. This is their last meeting. We'll be doing a formal thing in the new fiscal year. It's the start of July. So this is an informal sort of a ramp to what we'll be doing later on, because this board has a tradition of doing chair for nine years and a lamp and all those things. So they'll be coming in the new fiscal year, but we thought we need to recognize that in this year, so I'll open up the floor. Let's start with Dr. Day, and then we'll go to Mr. Tross.
Okay. Well, I would like to.
We'll do the comments for Dr. Day.
Oh, okay. Just excuse me.
Is that my ticket to go?
She was worried that she had to stay.
Dr. Carter, stay.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, I loved when we went to Richmond, not Richmond. Williamsburg. We always were together, and we all had dinner.
Oh, it was fun.
That was fun, and you two are just two wonderful people. I enjoyed getting to know you and just, you know, the talking, you know, just chatting about just different things, and I just appreciate you both, so thank you so much. I've learned a lot this year from you both, so thank you.
We'll be coming back to Randy later on.
Uh-oh. You learn more, you learn more from Dr. Carter than me, I guarantee.
Well, I'm gonna just put them all together, too.
All right, so let's do it together.
And, you know, to say that I learned a lot from you is kind of an empty accolade because I really didn't know anything when I got here. So anything, anything, holy moly, something, it was all uphill from there. But I really appreciate you both very much. I'm gonna miss you both very much. You made this more than interesting and fun, and I look forward to seeing you on the other side, too, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Best wishes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It's difficult to say goodbye to the, to the two of you, and it's important to say that we like you, and we do. We do all like you, but more importantly for me is I have a great deal of respect for the two of you. When you say something, I believe I need to listen because there's something there that you, that needs to be expressed and that we need to hear, and that's not always true of every person that we encounter in life, so you will be deeply missed, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Want to say about Randy?
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Oh, Randy.
We're gonna go out holding hands.
I think it was just wonderful working with you, and when you came in, I know that you took some heat for some of your decisions that you made, but you've always kept the students first. And, and also on the disciplinary committee meetings, I really liked working with you there because you knew that sometimes students will, just are distracted, and sometimes they're impulsive, but it doesn't mean that they're bad or they need to be discarded. They just need a second chance, so that was always great to work with you on that. And I wish you the best, and I'll see you.
Absolutely, I hope so, definitely.
Dr. Watergate is Dr. Edwards today.
So for both of you, I know from the staff perspective, we very much appreciate your commitment, first of all, to students and to the city, and to really focusing and ensuring that our school division is as best as it possibly can be. I know that you have a, both have a tremendous personal commitment to this community, to our school system, and we really just have appreciated your insight and thoughts as we've gone forth. So thank you so much for your service, and we'll look forward to seeing you volunteering in our schools as much as we want, yeah.
I love that part.
Yes.
You know, I have connection with both of you, and I have known you for a long time. I was thinking about you, tomorrow is 19th, you know?
Yes.
19th, other than Juneteenth is a special day because that's the day she defended her dissertation.
Wow.
So she wanted to defend on Juneteenth, and she worked really hard to make sure that 19th day is achieved, with all the back and forth feedback is completed by that day, so, you know, congratulations, tomorrow is a double celebration.
You're in.
I don't know which anniversary is that, but I will not disclose, but give you. But I appreciate all the advice you do. You know, we don't agree on every topic, but that doesn't have to be that way, as long as we will be able to work together.
That's true.
And Randy means, has become your very close buddies now, means anybody who calls me after 8:30 must be really close when I pick him up. And he loves to wake me up at 10 o'clock at night. And I see Randy, I say, okay, and I call him, I was telling Mr. DePaul, and I call him early in the morning, I reciprocate that, when he's sleeping, I wake him up. So, and one thing I remember from you all the time is slightly under the bus.
Slightly.
Put me slightly under the bus. You know, these memories, they last forever, and I wish he had stayed. He tried to twist his arms to stay on, on and on, but he would not listen. I know his love of his life is there, and he said, no, I got, I'll be kicked out of the home if I say.
Keep her, the keeper.
Yes.
She's here to make sure you leave.
Oh, yeah, exactly. What both of you have done over the years, and you too, Dr. Day.
Yeah, well, thank you, Sharon. You, you bring something to the board that I don't, don't think any of us can match, and you've been on the board nine years, longer than anyone else here, so you have the greatest depth of remembrance of what the board's been through, the way we've handled things in the past, and I know I've benefited from that many times. I'm sure others have as well, and that in particular, and even when there's disagreements about things, you always have, keep a cool head, and you may be boiling inside, but we don't see it outside. You're very respectful, and that's, that's really valuable, and I'm very grateful to that. And we've benefited from your legal perspective many times. Well, we have, we have, and even when there's a, when there's a controversial issue being discussed, it's clear that you think for yourself, you're not, I'm of this party or that party. It's always your considered opinion, and you are very diplomatic in expressing yourself, even when basically you're saying, no, you guys are wrong. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your, your, maybe it's a courtroom manner or something like that, that you learned to do that, not offend anyone, but I am grateful for that, and I will miss both of you being on the board next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter. Dr. Day said you are so calm in any type of storm, so well reasoned and rational, and I've always appreciated that. Our friendship, I think, has grown immensely since we first started to discuss things and our time at Williamsburg together and dinners, and I really, truly enjoyed having you as a colleague and growing our friendship, and I look forward to continuing to develop our friendship. You are very wise, definitely calm. I've always appreciated all your comments. Even when we agree to disagree, you always have very rational basis for your thoughts, and I've always appreciated that, and I've also always appreciated the fact that you're not afraid to say, hey, confront somebody and ask them their position, and, you know, confront them up front, which is an excellent quality to have, and I really admire you for that as well, so.
Thank you.
And I miss working with you, but I look forward to continuing to develop our friendship in the future, and I know there's still good things to come in the future as you, I support our children, our community, and look forward to seeing this develop.
Thank you.
Man, you two are amazing. We, you guys went from my colleagues to my mentors to my friends.
Absolutely.
And, you know, this board is, it represents what unity should be about, right? We don't always have the same opinions about things, but you two, man, you guys always keep a cool head, like everybody has already stated, bring something special to the table. We don't always agree, but we always walk away with a smiling faces, knowing that we did the best work we could for kids, right?
That's it.
And so thank you for your service. Thank you for everything you've done, not only for the school division, but for the community as a whole, and I just appreciate you. So if there's anything you guys ever need, just a phone call away, regardless of what you need, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Day, would you like to say anything?
Putting you on the spot, huh? Wait a minute, I take the mic. It's been a pleasure working with you both for the last nine years and.
Three.
Three years for you, so it's just been a pleasure being able to assist you in whatever you need, so.
Thank you.
We'll miss you both.
Thank you.
And I wanted to add one more thing. You know Laurel and STEM, I don't know what they would be without you. You have been the pillar as a board representative on that, God knows, forever, right?
Laurel, especially.
Yeah, and one more thing I remember about Randy is always talk about, don't forget the child, don't forget the child. So that will always be remembered, Randy think that, don't forget the child. All these decisions you make, please keep the child. Every time he and I argue, discuss, talk, he said, don't forget the child, don't forget the child. That's the one thing, you had that focus, and you will be missed for that, and hopefully others will take over that word from you, reminding at least me, don't forget the child. And I wanted to yield time to Dr. Brown. You know, you have worked with Mr. Tross on discipline committee, so if you want to say a few words, I took the permission from the acting superintendent to make sure it's okay, and you could take it.
Please, Dr. Brown, please.
Well, I was gonna save my comments during my board policy, but thank you for the time. And I just have the utmost esteem and respect for both of you. Anytime that we worked together on a committee, even during some really tough discipline committee meetings where things were not fun, I always knew that you were level-headed and measured, and you had students first, and so anytime that you're able to work with adults that really care about kids at that level, you know, thoughtful and rational, and I guess it's greatly appreciated, and your leadership means so much, not just to myself, but for all of our employees and students here in Lynchburg City. You've made our community better by your service through this board, and I can't thank you enough, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Now it's time for Mrs. Laurie.
Okay.
Let's go up front. Let's do it one at a time. Which one do you want to go, this side?
This is mine. This is mine.
Ladies first.
Into the, into the horseshoe?
Oh, wow. Exactly.
Come on. Go in the horseshoe.
We got these, I'm like.
This is my wife, Natalie. She's the one that puts up with me.
Now, we'll give this one to Natalie. Natalie's gonna go like this, but I know they're going this way.
Well, thank you. Well, they were getting the middle.
Yeah.
I think the board, Ms. Laurel, y'all gonna get it? Yeah, please do. Dr. Day?
Ms. Preston. Yes, ma'am.
Now, you're, you're doing the split in front.
Sure, people, stand up.
Stand up.
Let's see, let's do, Dr. Gupta, just a little bit this way. Dr. Andrews.
You can call me doctor, that's fine.
Yep, that's good. And three, two, one, three, two, one, three, uh, eight.
Y'all don't know this, this man is a professional photographer.
Would you like to? If you were to go on record, yeah, hold on, let me just give a. I'll yield the floor to you. Mrs. Tross, I'll yield the floor to you. You have a few words to keep him in check.
Uh-oh.
Oh, gosh.
You're in trouble now.
Take this opportunity.
You're on camera, you're being recorded, so.
To thank you all for putting up with him, because I know that can sometimes be a fun challenge, but I know he's really enjoyed working with each and every one of you, and getting to know you guys here on the school board, as well as personally. I hear phone calls every so often, and I, from a distance, but I know that he's really having fun through all of it, and with the kids in mind first and foremost. I know that's very important to him, so thank you all for allowing him to be part of your group, this very special group. He will definitely miss you guys and all of this wonderful work that you're doing. So, I hope you all continue to do wonderful things, and I'm sure he'll be in the distance, sort of chiming in his own special way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carter and Mr. Tross, for all you have done, and you continue to doing that. Next one is LCS Division Literacy Plan, Dr. Wardke.
Yes, sir, thank you. On the June fourth meeting, the school board received a report from Ms. Cruz regarding the division-wide literacy plan. That plan includes the vision, the selection of high-quality instructional materials, the use of evidence-based practices, as well as our monitoring and assessment plan, both for individual students, as well as the division-wide, and finally, our plan for engagement on this process. So, in the board docs, you have a copy of the full plan. You think you just received the presentation last time. That full plan is available to you. It's about a six-page document, and it stands before you tonight for approval, and does need your approval to move forward. And Ms. Cruz is here to answer any further questions that you may have. Ms. Cruz.
Is there a motion to approve, then we can have the discussion?
I make a motion.
Dr. Day, Mr. Andrews, second to motion. Now, they open for discussion. Any question for Mrs. Cruz?
Um, I do. Of course I do. Of course, I have some. Okay, so I just had two things, and I know something was mentioned to, I mentioned before about just protecting teachers' planning time.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's just so important, and for elementary teachers especially, because we do not get those long breaks. Our kids are with us unless it's lunch or recess, and then other people want to talk to us during our recess break. You know, this is like, oh my goodness, you know, the, so if, I don't know, I, I just feel like if it could be moved from, instead of every single week, just like two weeks, like the first and the third, or the second and the fourth, to have those meetings, because I know there are times, I personally, because of all the interruptions, I always stayed after school when everybody left, because that's when I could plan, because no one was gonna call me on intercom, or call me on the phone, or need something. So, just consider that. And the other thing was the hubs for the, that you were, I read about, for parents that you're gonna have at the schools, we need those at the community centers too, because those stakeholders feel left out, because it's their children, they told us that they're not passing, and they want to be more involved. So, if we could have that set up at the community centers as well, so that parents can just go within their community if they can't make it back to the school or whatever, for any reason. So, just consider those things.
Thank you, and we took that feedback last time, so we are working with several of our community groups, and we promise that we are gonna push that information out, because it is just as important to us for that community alliance. So, we are working towards that as well. As far as the planning and implementation, even the adoption of the new calendar allows for some more planning time, some additional days, so that we can separate. And again, I cannot stress enough the importance and appreciation we as a, as a team have for the time we were given back previously for the training. Our folks just left feeling so much better, and there were questions, there were wonderful questions, and just very energetic about, about the place that we're moving into with the instructional materials. So, I think that we are heading in a very, very positive direction.
Great, that's great. That's all I had.
Other question, Mr. Tross?
Um, I think it's a fantastic plan. I want to just make sure, under section six, engaging the community, kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Lowry, for whatever reason, I don't think it's the, for lack of trying on the part of our school system, but we just never seem to get a lot of parental participation in some of our meetings and things of that nature. And I just, whatever we can do to focus getting those parents involved, they want their children to succeed, whether it's our facilities work sessions that we tried to get the parents to come out to. We just weren't well-attended. I don't know the answer, but I know we really went out of our way to provide food, childcare, all kinds of stuff to get the parents to show up for those particular meetings, and they didn't really attend them that well. Hopefully, they'll come here, and we can get the parental participation or the guardian participation, so that we get these children, you know, learning and succeeding in their literacy plan. But I think it's a great plan, just to make sure we get that community involvement. Fantastic.
And we're, we're happy to go the extra mile. We want to meet people where they are. So, we know above and beyond, you all were speaking to one another, and the term that came to me was relationships, right? Relationships are key, because that trust, that value, that respect is embedded in that, and we have to pour that back in our community as we're doing this work. Value our kids, understand the why, so we'll meet people where they are, and that's some of that community center that's going to meetings, that, that might be the ball field sometimes. So, wherever we can get information out of, we're gonna push that and do that.
Good deal. Thank you.
Other questions? I requested last time, you can tie it to an assessment, so we know the gains we make. You know, the SOL for the fifth graders, so reading, when you improve, it's an excellent plan. The outcome of that plan, is it tied to an assessment or are we looking to tie?
We have several assessments, and they are listed in the plan, and some of the core curriculum that we adopted has not only unit assessments, but they have weekly assessments. We also have the vowels component that's in there. So, there are several key identifiers that we can say, we're gonna get it early and often, instead of waiting until a fall growth or a winter growth assessment, or even an end of year to say, ah, we didn't get it. But we want to make sure that we're targeting skills, opposed to waiting so long, and we're having to tackle something at, at a larger scale. So, yes, we have several components that are listed in here that will be tied.
IXL and all, what happens is there's a website, schoolquality.com, where the DOE reports all the data. So, what they report is the SOL, but not IXL and other data. So, when people from outside are looking in, they are looking at those reporting data, and that's what I meant by assessment, is it tied to somebody? When people outside are looking at it, and they can see the gains we have made.
Well, and one of the things that you'll see, and I'm glad you mentioned that, IXL, not everybody uses that, so because that's not a common assessment across the state, you won't see a lot of those things. Vowels is a common assessment, so you'll see that in the lower grade levels. So, the common component, that's why you see so many of the SOLs. It doesn't mean it's based off of that. Our families will have access, and there are reporting mechanisms for those benchmark, the unit assessments, any additional supplemental intervention tools that we use. So, our families do have access to that, and respecting those families to provide that, sit down and meet and have those conversations. But the public-facing data is what is common, and the only thing that really appears to be common is that SOL.
Thank you.
I just want, this is to help on their end for understanding. For elementary especially, can pre-K through third, you need like a month before you're gonna see any gains. It's, the weekly things are in there, but for smaller children, the repetition is how they learn. And so, until you have like a month, a month and a half go by, then you're gonna see, oh, they were here, now they're making these gains. If you do it in two weeks, you're not gonna see any difference. So, you're not gonna see much difference, you're just gonna see the lessons they learned that week. But if you want to see if they're making any gains, you have to give smaller children more time. So, just so you know.
And I wanted to say something. I was at Paul Monroe graduation a couple of months ago. At Paul Monroe, they allow every kid to come on the stage and speak.
Fifth graders.
And these are fifth graders, and they mention about their first-grade teacher at that time. And I said, man, these people remember the first-grade teacher four years out. I'll forget it. I'm done with that teacher. You know, and that teacher is Mrs. Lowry. So, you know, so you know what you're talking about, because I have seen in action the effect on the learning of these students. So, but, and also, thank you, Mrs. Cruz. You know, everything you do, you take every question with a smile. Any other questions? Madam Pla, would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Thank you, Mr. Tross, for everything that you've done and being so welcoming. We really appreciate everything you've done for us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is fiscal 2025 operating budget discussion. Do we have any discussions to do?
Yes, sir, I'll just do an informational update on where we are. As you will recall, the school board adopted their revised fiscal year 2025 budget on June sixth. It was then very quickly transmitted, thanks to Ms. Jamie's, to the city, and city council ultimately adopted that budget on the following Tuesday. So, it was adopted as, adopted by the school board, so you are done with budget now for a few more months, and then the time to start again as well. So, one point of success that I do want to point out, this was a very challenging budget year, as, as we all know very painfully, but Mrs. Shepherd and her team in the HR office did an excellent job of getting contracts out this year about a month earlier than last year. So, that was even during, again, a very difficult budget, budget season, and very, very contentious. And so, really appreciate that. I know our staff really appreciates that. Having that knowledge of that contract coming out at that time was really valuable. So, thank you to, to Mrs. Shepherd and her team for that. I know the staff appreciates it.
Thank you.
Dr. Wardke, you know, Dr. Carter is leaving the board, but her legacy is, she's been asking for that dollar increase in the hourly wages. So, hopefully, if we have any savings, we can look into, how much, nine hundred thousand for a dollar increase?
Approximately.
Approximately nine hundred thousand for a dollar increase.
Absolutely.
And would you like to announce those things you had?
Sure, so I wanted to just take a second to point out some of the, the work this board's doing. You know, you're, I'm always gonna talk about facilities and the importance of the work that our staff there does. I wanted to invite you and just have you have an opportunity to take a look at some of the facility improvements that we're doing this summer. Oftentimes, in school divisions, you know, we'll hear, oh, it's summertime, you must have the, have some downtime. We're not, not much is going on, but Dr. Brown knows that's not true, right? We're, we're busily working, but you probably see some of this work, and so at RS Payne, we're replacing, or we're repairing the original slate roof from nineteen twenty-six, and so that's going back to the original, and actually in very good condition, just a few broken slates and that sort of thing. At Dunbar, our big project for the summer, we were replacing the windows on the west building, which has been, again, original nineteen fifties windows, and so they look really great, will be much better for students. That's something that we actually started with in conversations with Carl Luce at the LEA, so it was something that came forth with that. Of course, we're doing our new heating system there as well, as well as installing a new security vestibule at that school. So, lots of stuff happening at Dunbar, as well as painting a number of the classrooms, really trying to focus in on, on that learning environment as well. Glass, Ms. Preston, I mentioned just a few minutes ago, we're replacing the air conditioning there. The chillers are out right now, they're, the new ones are in, and they'll, it'll, it'll cool off pretty soon, but that is a generational project that needs to be done, and so that, that'll be very valuable. Paul Monroe and Hutcheson are both getting security vestibules. But don't worry, across town, we're doing some other things as well. Sheffield in the fall will be getting a new chiller, new air conditioner as well, as well as some division-wide lock-in key projects that we'll be making to improve security. So, lots of stuff going on. Again, really just can't express the, the importance of positive learning environments. I think I say it a lot, it's the most important thing we do, is that we employ really incredible teachers and other instructional staff, but we also have to have very, very strong and welcoming learning environments. So, this board is making a lot of progress in that. These buildings, in many cases, have had a lot of needs for a long time, and so we're slowly starting to make progress. So, I do want to thank you for that and all the work that's going on.
I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, question, you said Paul Monroe and who else?
Paul Monroe and Hutcheson are
Hutcheson.
Getting security vestibules.
Okay.
They're under construction.
Security, alright.
Not that I'm aware of, it's sort of a large project, but maybe, maybe there's something smaller.
And pressure, pressure washing of those concretes at Heritage High School.
Oh, absolutely.
And replacing those flags at Heritage High School.
We'll, we'll do those too, yes, sir.
I nag him all the time, because those, I can see from my home, those concretes have become black in color. So, there needs to be pressure wash. But thank you, everything you do, appreciate everything you have done.
Yes, very much. And now's a new board member for the next budget. Yeah, I don't know how to ask now.
CIP budget has not, is not, a lot of things were cut out, right?
Lots of stuff was cut out, but we're, again, we're making progress. It just takes small steps at a time. So, we'll continue to grow, and, and again, these, many of these buildings have needed lots for a long time, and so we're making, making small steps.
Cool.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Next one is item F1, curriculum and instruction policy review, Dr. Wardke.
Yes, sir, so the curriculum and policy team met on June third to review a, a policy that I believe was originally proposed by Mr. Tross, that was designed to take a look at some graduation components, particularly recognizing the high academic achievers in our school division. That committee met as well as with the principals of the two high schools to discuss those processes, and this, this policy stands before you to be approved. Dr. Brown, I believe, is also here to make comments and answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wardke, for the introduction. And board members, I know you always have the policies and do a wonderful job of reading ahead. So, just to summarize, this policy does several things. One, it recognizes the individualism of both high schools and uniqueness of their graduations. It also creates a way to recognize students for their hard work academically, and establishing honor roll, and honor roll with distinction. Honor roll being defined as students having an average grade of eighty or above, and honor roll with distinction being ninety and above. Also, it creates a way to recognize them in their commencement ceremonies of having high honors, if they have a minimum GPA of three-point-eight or higher. That can be determined by the high schools, how that is celebrated. It also creates in policy a way to define and ensure that valedictorians and salutatorians are recognized for their hard work and efforts, as being valedictorian number one in their class and salutatorian number two. Valedictorian, if there is a tie, both students or however many students with, that are tied with the GPA would be recognized, and then the next lowest GPA would be recognized as salutatorian. Also provides them the opportunity to deliver speeches in front of their peers for the commencement ceremony, and should they not elect to speak, then they would be, the school principals would be able to select a speaker. It also has a contingency, the ability for principals to have the individual flair to their own ceremonies by allowing any additional speakers to speak. So, if there are any other questions, happy to entertain those, but that is the policy change for honor roll and graduation honors.
Questions for Dr. Brown?
Or, or I can explain.
Go ahead. Actually, I wanted to name, I just asked Dr. Day, you can put your name on this policy, because you have been passionate. because you have been passionately advocating that for years, two years now. And you were in forefront of rewriting this policy, so go ahead.
Well, and bottom line is, I liked what Heritage did with respect to the commencement ceremony, that they allowed certain children to have this, I'd say, a graduation with distinction. And regardless of whether or not they are an advanced diploma or some other type of diploma, if any child meets a 3.8 GPA threshold, they get that, that distinction. Versus, I know in the graduation ceremony now, they have these things if you took an advanced diploma or you did some other type of criteria to meet those. This would be, you say, if you did it, I don't care what diploma you go for, if you have a 3.8, you're gonna be recognized with distinction of honors. The other thing I wanted to make sure, and we kinda do it, but I want, it was just a basic honor roll. You know, the children, if you get a B average, I want these children to be recognized in some way. And I say published in the, in the thing, just so on a, on the grading cycle, if you're getting an 80 and above, you're gonna be identified as an honor roll person. Again, I'd like to see these children, from an academic standpoint, have a goal to aspire to and to be recognized for that goal, regardless of whether or not they're taking the advanced diploma or one of the other types of diploma. You know, if you can take just, you know, the regular classes, but you're doing well and you're keeping your academics up, you deserve to be recognized. And then finally, just with the valedictorian, salutatorian, over the years, there's a number of children wanting to speak and they, you know, at Heritage they speak, at Glass sometimes they don't speak. And just give them the opportunity to speak if they wish to, and still Glass can still maintain their tradition of having the students vote for speakers as well. So it kinda covers all those different areas, and that's what that policy is about, just to kinda recognize the achievers for getting good grades.
And that continues from elementary. We have honor roll, B honor roll stuff in elementary, so it'd be a continuation of what's already in place.
Right. And, and the children, I want you, you have a goal and you've met your goal, it's a decent goal. A, a, a B average is a great goal to aspire to, is attainable. And I would love to be able to give it to, you know, hopefully every child could get it, and we'll recognize all of them. So just want them to set some goals and be recognized for achieving their goals. That's kinda what we're thinking about.
This is a proposed policy, so I'll need a motion to make it an action item before we discuss. Is there a motion to make it an, Mr. Andrews, second? Dr. Day, second. Madam Clark, would you please call the role to make it an action item?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This becomes an action item now. Is there a motion to approve? Then we can discuss it. Mr. Andrews? Mrs. Lowry? Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion, I forgot, but go ahead. I lost my thought.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
So I'll basically move open for any discussion. I apologize, I missed that step, and I'll get, any discussion on this policy?
Not a discussion, but just a question. Does, does anybody have any specific idea about how this recognition would take place? I mean, it could be as simple as an asterisk by the name in the, in the program or something. Did you have something specific in mind or?
Well, we discussed that during the policy. I'll let you address it or I can address it.
I don't wanna stick a thunder, sir.
At, at, at the Heritage graduation ceremonies, they had that separate aisle. Now, for EC Glass, there may be a lot of students, so it may take too much time to have a separate thing. But I think, they, they talked, right, to sit separately. But I think there was this, as they called their name, it's a, you know, graduation with distinct, with distinction as they said their name, just so the ceremony wouldn't be too much longer of a ceremony. I think that's kinda how we decided during the, the meeting. The other issue was, I think that came up that, hey, there may be a lot of kids. But again, I would love, if everybody made the distinction, I'd be, I mean, I'd be, I'd love that. And then finally, with item number one, with the honor roll, I think we pretty much identify an honor, an honor roll, achiever, but we wanted to make sure, and the policy says publishing, I don't know if that means on the website. We didn't wanna make it very, an onerous issue, but we wanted the children to be able to say, hey, my name's on, you know, maybe it's the website, maybe it's some, right, a school newsletter somewhere that they could, you know, point their, you know.
But keeping that in mind, then each school would, both schools would not necessarily have to do the exact same thing.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna be clear.
Yeah.
Dr. Carter?
So how are the students now recognized for honor roll or, like all of the students? Or is there a certain way, are their names published or is it in their weekly or monthly calendar?
Yeah, we don't have a uniform division-wide way that we recognize it, and it depends school to school how that's done currently.
But I'd like them to be recognized because I think if these kids are working hard and putting in their time, they might see their name in a, in, online or newsletter or somewhere in print where they can feel good about some success they've had.
Definitely. Other comments? So the policy is approved, right, basically, as we, thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you for all your hard work on developing this policy with Mr. Tross.
Thank you.
And?
I give all the credit to Mr. Tross.
That's a good team effort. You guys, I would say the policy work group had some excellent modifications and changes. They caught some things that I'd missed, and I really appreciate that, the insight and the feedback. We modified it based upon some board member feedback as well as a policy group feedback. It was an excellent team effort.
Please convey our thanks to Ms. Hancock for communicating on your behalf all the time.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. I probably should have had my right-hand paralegal Carrie Hancock. She, she, she does a lot. You know, when I first got on, if I may, when I first got on the school board, I thought maybe I was gonna be able to send her to some of the meetings. I quickly realized that wasn't the case. So she's, I guess, take these flowers, sir. Thank you, Carrie.
I'm going off, but you know, that's why we are a fun group.
Yes.
It's formal, but it's not that. The next item, if I can get my calendar back, is the, looks like a govern, a policy review. Dr. Day, I yield it to you.
Okay, so there's lots here. Initially, this agenda item just concerned the voting method for, that would, to be used at our annual organizational meeting when we elect the chair and vice chair of each year's committee. And I had, I had proposed making a change, an insertion into the policy that describes that. And that, my proposal is in the file that was attached called Chair Vote Proposal. But in talking to Dr. Gupta, he said he felt that maybe it would be better if we let next year's committee decide how the vote should go, rather than us decide for them. So, so it, I will go ahead and make a motion that we let next year's committee decide what the voting method is gonna be before they take a vote. And if that motion fails, then I will talk about what I was gonna suggest.
Let me second your motion so I can explain what I meant by next year's. And Dr. Carter, you'll remember that in the previous years, I said there'll be members rolling off and we should not be making decisions in regards to the future vote. Couple of years ago, so I still stand by that statement. The new board takes over on July 1st, right? And they decide how they want to elect, not elect their chair, vice chair. So if all this board was continuing, then it's a fair thing. But if not, then you give those nine members, maybe that day they can decide how they want to vote. And that's where I was coming from, Dr. Carter.
I, I don't think I agree with you.
Okay.
I know, because a lot of times, they're not aware, as Mr. DePaul said, he just wasn't, and it's too much. It's too much for the first meeting. Just asking a member, I remember the first meeting I was at, and two major things was the reorganization meeting and then the empowerment academy, and I just said, oh my God, what did I get into? But the vote is too much. I think if we have a process, we'll explain what the process is, it's best to have something. You have a lot of new members and they're not gonna have a slightest idea, no history behind anything. And then you're gonna, giving this decision to make is too much. I think we need to have a, a process in place.
Mr. DePaul?
Are you through? I have to agree because there are other policies that we are putting forward onto the new board. This is a, this is something that they may or may not, most likely not, have an understanding. So of intricacies. So I think it's important that we have it in place and they can just follow it, as opposed to making, remaking the wheel.
So there's a consensus, maybe you want to modify your motion and?
Well, I'd like to comment on the motion that's on the floor. And I kinda echoing what Mr. DePaul just said, that we have lots of policies that constrain what the board can and can't do and the way it should do it. And I don't see anything different about specifying what the election method should be. We do have policy, policy that, and I think it's even state law, that says all our votes have to be public, we can't have secret ballots. But my reason for raising this issue is, if you recall, our reorganization meeting last July, there was some tension over how the vote should proceed. And my motive in proposing that we adopt a procedure, whether it's just for this coming July's meeting or whether it's a, a policy change that would be applicable to all future years, is simply to avoid that tension and conflict at our very first meeting. Now, whatever we decide about this, my intent, unless someone tells me I shouldn't do this, will be to write to the incoming board members and explain what these issues are that are gonna be decided at this first meeting, to try to give them a heads up to help with the situation that you described.
Wanna modify your motion to include your?
Well, the motion on the floor.
But we can put a substitute motion.
Okay, if that's what you want to do.
Right, that way, because it looks like consensus is, right, to develop a process, that's what you guys are asking?
So what was your motion at first, Dr. Day?
Well, my motion was that we ne, let the, the incoming board decide. But that's not my, I made that motion, I guess I'm obligated to vote for it if I made the motion.
But we can do it.
You can rescind.
But let me make a, okay, so let me make a substitute motion. My, my original intent was to propose the voting procedure that's in the file, Chair Vote Proposal dot PDF, as, as the procedure that will be followed this coming July. So I'm not proposing a policy change. We could consider that, next year's board can consider that. But I'm proposing that at least for the, the vote that happens at our organizational meeting next month, we follow what looks like a rather elaborate procedure here, but most of it is just to cover cases. What if there, if there's tie votes or lots of candidates? Basically, the main issue or the main outline or features of this is that things will, would proceed as they normally do, that board members make nominations. Then we would go into a discussion phase where people who've been nominated have the opportunity to withdraw their name or to talk about why they, what their agenda might be for being board chair. Board members can ask each other questions, we just talk about it. And then after we're done talking about it, the way the vote will happen is we will have a ballot listing all of the candidates who have not withdrawn and a fourth option, which is none of the above, and we vote on that. And if any candidate gets a majority of, votes from a majority of the committee, five, no abstentions allowed, they are the chair. But if a lot of people voted for none, that means nobody really supports any of the candidates and we need to go back to the nomination process. And the other two things here is what happens if nobody gets a majority? You know, what if there's one person with four votes, a person with three, and then a couple of people with two? What we do is we knock off the people with the fewest number of votes and we, we reduce the ballot by that, and then we go back and revote. And we repeat that process until either we come to a winner who gets five or more votes or nobody gets to that point, in which case we go back and start again with nominations. That was the procedure I proposed. I was trying to address every possible difficult situation that we could encounter. But I think in the past, at least the two years that I've been on it, there haven't been more than two candidates. I don't know if in the distant. So it, it would simply, in almost every case, just be a single ballot with two or one name and a third option, which is basically, I don't support either of those two people. And that would be the way that the ballot would be.
Are you proposing that substitute?
That's what I'm proposing. You have the exact text of it here in the file.
I second that motion, and just for a discussion, the reason I was saying no because two years ago, they were doing a closed session before the July 1st. And I was against it because you cannot have a closed session looking at the voting which will happen after July 1st, if you remember that.
Well, we did the closed session the first, the first meeting in July.
And it happened in June and then also happened in July, so.
It did in Ju, July.
So that's the reason, so to be consistent, that's why I told him, that, you know, we need to be doing in July. But in principle, I agree, something needs to be more formalized, but that's where I was coming from. So there's a substitute motion on the floor. There's a second, any discussion on that? Dr. Carter?
What is the reason for not being able to sustain or for, because somebody may want to just not?
Then they should vote none of the above. And I think this is a very important decision, and I think every board member needs to, needs to take a position on this. That's, that's my feeling.
My question was, you said you wanted to give the new members coming in a heads up?
Yeah.
So you'll, so you would, after they have been, we found out who they are, you're gonna send them something about the process and they can, so they'll be ready to, okay?
And if you want, I will, I will copy the whole board so that they see what those individuals are seeing.
The plan is 25th, I think the city council will vote on the new members.
Yeah, a week from tonight.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, I think, Ms. Day, we have opened up for background check.
Yes, sir.
And the oath thing, so that we, we'll talk about this special session on the second. Other discussion on this. Madam Clark, would you please call the role on the substitute motion?
So the vote, what we're about to vote on is whether to make this substitute motion the active motion.
Yep.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now this becomes a main motion, right? You know, the parliamentarians, you have to tell them.
Yeah, so the, the motion now on the floor is, is what's printed in bold in this file, Chair Vote Proposal dot PDF. There are some comments at the bottom that we're explaining, but it's just the part that's in bold. It has five parts and I just, a minute, a few minutes ago describing the process. But the actual text of the motion is what's printed in bold in that file.
So do we need a motion, second or motion is good to go, right?
Well, we, we've already.
It's, it's an action item.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we made an amendment to, a substitute motion, that, that substitution was approved. So now this is the active.
Any more discussion on that motion?
And when you talk about comments, I would, Dr. Day, I would also let the new people coming in know that the superintendent is the chair until a chair is voted.
Okay, yeah, so, all right. So do you want that to be in here or just communicated to the new people?
Just communicated to the new people, yeah.
Yeah, I, that's very appropriate and I'd.
Just a question, in the comments where it says if one only board member is a candidate, is that really if only one board member?
Yeah, that's, that's just a grammatical error.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what you meant.
If only one board member is a candidate, step three simply becomes an up-down vote on that member's chair. Yeah, I had the two words in the wrong order, thank you for correcting that. But that's not part of the motion because it's not the bold.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what you're saying, though.
You good? Other discussion? Would you please call the role?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The other policies, you wanna talk about them?
Okay, now there, this morning we attached to the agenda these, let's see, six other files here. So the reason is there are several policy revisions that are currently pending but have not yet come to the board for a vote or even a first reading. Five of them are policy recommendations that came from the Discipline Policy Review Committee, the ad hoc Discipline Policy Review Committee. One of them was some modifications that I suggested about the election of advisory committees to the board. There were also several other issues that I raised for the Governance Policy Work Group to consider, but those have not been formulated as an actual text of a policy revision. So I'm prepared to give you the sort of history of each of these, specifically the ones that come from the Discipline Policy Review Committee, if you want me to. Is that what, is that what you want me to do?
Let me remind people who are watching this, there was an ad hoc policy committee appointed in the beginning of the year. The Dr. Day, Mr. DePaul, right? Who, who's, Mrs. Laurie is the third board member. And apparently is on, by Rebecca Turner. The goal was to look at all the policies, see how we can improve the discipline in our school system. So they have, they have been meeting, involving all the stakeholders in that discussion process. And they come up with these policies, but today's our last meeting and I wanted to make sure that this, there's some benchmark in terms of what this board has achieved so far. You know, there'll be a new board formed as of July 1st. So this is not an action item. This is not an information, this is just for pure information for the public, that this is what the board has done so far. And so it'll be good to go through major items which we are going to modify or acting on, working on modifying.
Okay, so let me just tell you what the change is concerned, rather than, I've also written down the history of who proposed what, when, and when, and blah, blah, blah. So I'll skip all that part because that could take a while. So let me talk first about policy JFCZ. This is the cellphone policy and basically what the ad hoc Discipline Policy Review Committee is recommending is that we change that policy so that cellphones are, well, currently cellphone use is not allowed at elementary or middle school. The change we make is to the, at the high school, we wanted to make the policy so that cellphones are only allowed to be used during the lunch period. Any other time of day, the school day, they're not allowed to be used. And is, we also put in a statement that if a student is found to be using their cellphone in violation of that policy and they are asked to surrender their phone, but they resist or refuse, then they are to get a suspension at school. So those are the primary changes. Were there other things that were?
Well, I didn't, wasn't there a chime in by either-
Chatty wagon?
Okay.
Or Mr. Dr. Brown saying that, about how suspensions have to work?
No, so we're not talking about suspensions, we're talking about cellphones.
Yeah, I know, but-
But the provision of three days if they fail to give up is a suspension of three days, automatic.
Right. So we, okay, so I'm looking, I'm looking at the document that was attached, JFCZ dash two B. So the, the things that are new is we put in a definition of what a personal electronic communication device is and this would include not only cellphones, but smartwatches, earbuds, headphones, anything that can use to play audio, take or play photos, or record audio or video.
I was just making sure that we were following along, we weren't-
Yeah, that was an issue for a different policy.
Oh, okay, all right, then we're good.
And so the, the primary change here is that at the high school level, use of a cellphone would only be allowed during the student lunch period. At all other times, a student's device must be turned off, not just silenced, and out of sight. In other words, in a bookbag or locker. And then-
And might wanna explain why. The reason why we said, well, and I came up with that, was because after talking with the principals, we didn't realize the kids have jobs. I wasn't even thinking about that. So they have jobs, they do the checking with their bosses or if there's a message from a parent, that's the time to do it, so.
We, we also put in a statement that says, "The principal may authorize individual exceptions to this policy based on documented medical needs of a student or while a student is present in the school office." So they have an immediate need to make a phone call and it's not their lunch period. They can go to the office and get permission to make the call from there. Those are the, the, the primary changes that, that we are proposing and so that's what's in this policy.
Dr. Carter has a question.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting how years make changes. We tried to do the cellphone policy and it was met with strong, strong opposition, but now that seems like everyone's going there. But regarding the cellphone, a lot of the students, and I'm glad to see that exception, that the principal, because some students have the continuous glucose monitors or other monitors.
Exactly.
And some students need it for social and emotional learning and, but one thing I do have a problem is this, when does a student ever wanna give you something, right away? So there'll be a lot of three-day suspensions if we say refuses to surrender. There's gotta, there has to be-
First, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you, I'm-
There has to be some other options other than just saying shell, and shell is a strong word, be suspended for three days. We've got to explore some other ways before we even put that, that shell is really a powerful word. That leaves no exceptions.
And just for clarification, Ms. Lowry, just to tie in what you were asking, were you asking about the progressive discipline that we do in regards to the suspension in the language that we have in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the policy doesn't necessarily align with our progressive discipline model because we do progressively increase consequences as students make more poor decisions. This policy does dictate that there's a suspension for three days. And then as I interpret it, it would be every time a student refuses, so it wouldn't increase, it would just stay at that level. And then I think it would be important to add, if I may suggest, if I'm not out of line.
Mm-hmm, no.
I got a head shake, that it's defined as restorative suspension center or as restorative suspension or a out-of-school suspension, whatever the will of the board is. There is some things to consider. If it's a restorative suspension, that space is limited. And if we are having a lot of students, that does tie up that center for just those infractions. There's out-of-school suspension that has reporting implications as well. So just something to consider. We will do whatever is the will of the board.
Go ahead.
And I know our major focus this year is achievement gap. If we have students out of school three days or somewhere else, I think that needs to be, we just need to get rid of that and look at, there's gotta be another way to address that.
Great points. I'm, you know, we have things to consider. I'm in favor of the shell be suspended because that interferes. If they fail to give up the phone, they fail to, they have made the decision, they don't wanna be part of the progressive disciplinary process. They've made the decision, they're saying no to the teacher, because the first step is to take it, to get it back at the end of the day. If they want to escalate at that point, that is my belief, my position, that they have taken themselves out of the, out of the disciplinary process and they can have whatever suspension, whether it's in school to keep them in the learning environment, whether it's at home, okay, let's, let's talk about that. But if they make a decision to take themselves out, that's, bottom line, their decision.
And also, in my experience, when you give a rule and you stick to it, you have less offenders. When you stick to, because they know you're gonna stick to it.
I, I don't see that. I think you, we're gonna, we're, that's a lot of days, three days. Because you're not gonna surrender the phone. There's, what do we do now? What's the, if someone is really-
Nothing's being implemented.
It's up to the teacher, I think.
The teacher, but I think there's other-
We have a progressive discipline chart, I have my computer, I can pull up and tell you exactly what we do. But it's a refusal to comply with the request of a staff member or administrator. And then there's a progressive step up, but it wouldn't start at a three-day level. Sometimes it starts as an in-school suspension at the high school level or, or a restorative suspension of a day. And then it increases on up from there. Middle school, elementary is different, lesser consequences as you go down in the levels.
So if they forget to do, if they refuse to do the first two, they've chosen the three day?
So what is, oh, Dr. Carter.
Go ahead.
So what is, what is the, is there any opposition or, that's not the word I'm looking for, but any, any resistance for anyone that wants to, we can follow our progressive disciplinary process instead of shell be suspended for three days? Why can't we change that wording? We're gonna, we have a progressive disciplinary process, so why aren't we following for this?
My point is that from what I've interviewed, talked with teachers, and when I went through the schools, they have phones out right in classrooms. I've witnessed it myself. There is no implementation at this point. So we need some definites, we need some ground rules, and as long as they know the ground rules prior, then they can make an informed decision, whether it's good or bad. Now, I'm not against the progressive, as you were making mention about the progressive policy. Even that's not being followed. So we need something hard that we can come down from or back away from. We need something strong to begin with. This is gonna be met with opposition. My suggestion is what I've learned when I was teaching, what Ms. Lowry just said. You need to make this known, that we're not going to be backing down. We need to be strong and then we can back away. We can't be soft and add and add and add. We need to come strong on this and we can back away once we get, once we, they recognize that this is important.
Yeah, I wanted to add a couple more comments. The, the committee has talked about, well, you may remember, we had, the committee had a meeting in which the whole board was invited and we had a number of the principals here to speak about this particular issue. And we were told that in the past at EC Glass, there was this chatty wagon approach, which was a, a method for handling confiscations of the phones. And that, that apparently was successful, both the assistant principal who spoke about it, as well as the former principal, Rose Flohr, who I talked to on the phone about it, said that it was viewed as successful and that we, we might be able to go back to that this fall because we are going to a seven-period schedule instead of block scheduling, which was important for the management of that plan before. So we had talked about trying to form some kind of a task force over the summer to talk about implementation of this, of a confiscation procedure that, that, that could be handled efficiently and effectively. But we haven't taken any specific action to form that task force. And also, we had talked all along about the fact that it would be important to educate both the students and their families and the teachers of whatever new policy would be put in place and warn them over and over and over again in advance. You're better off not bringing your phone to school unless you have a really good reason for it to be there because if it's not there, you're not gonna run afoul of this, this policy. So we haven't made any particular plans about that either. And then the last point I would make is none of these policies have come back to the board from the appropriate policy work group yet, which is where typically we work out these kinds of issues and concerns. So we are just talking about them tonight to give you a status report of where they stand. We're not claiming that it's, that it's, that, that the version you have in front of you is what the final version is going to be. It's just here is the most recent version so that you see it, the public sees it, we can air our concerns. That's all that's going on here.
That's a very good point because it, I'm sorry, let me just, hear my thought. The, the committee technically ends on June 30th. The committee's meeting was set on June 28th, but there's no board meeting right after that.
We, we do have one more meeting at this committee.
That's what I'm saying, June 28th. So that's why the status report is being done today. So that way, this board which is currently in place and has gone, you know, the committee has gone through, so that's why you're hearing. Go ahead, one of you had it.
I, I was simply gonna say that, that I, I understand that taking a hard line is important because people learn when you, when you take a hard line. But at the same time, this is gonna be a change from what people are accustomed to. And so taking a not quite as difficult of a stance, I think, might be wise. So for example, if you said, the first time you bring a cellphone to school or bring it out or whatever we decide, the first time that happens, you're gonna get a one-day suspension and/or your parent has to come and have a conference with whomever. The second time, then you're gonna get a suspension, so that it is, so that it is a gradual process. Because we've gotta teach the kids, but we've also gotta teach the parents that this is not gonna be tolerated. And so if we had some kind of step-by-step process so that everybody's getting indoctrinated, if you will, at the, at the same time, maybe that would solve the problem.
And that's what I was, I think that's what they're saying. There is a process, they're going to be warned and then after that, there'll be the next step that Dr. Brown was talking about. But, but we also said that we're gonna make sure the parents knew about it. It was gonna be in their student handbook when they got it too. And that was gonna be like a separate page, a cellphone page, like signs.
But my concern is, at this point, we've made no plans to get that into the handle.
The talk that we've talked.
Yeah, so, so the implementation of all this, we haven't done anything about. And so I don't know how that's gonna happen at this point.
Dr. Brown, when does the handbook go out?
At the beginning of the school year.
Oh, so we got time to put it in?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, if we can resolve it over the summer, then-
We will.
Yeah, we will.
But advanced education of parents and students can't happen until the board acts on it.
We'll take care of it.
Well, Dr. Carter?
One, I was reading an article that was stated that a lot of times the parents also are one of the major contributors to students being on the phone, calling to say, what, what, where do you need to go? What do you, what time are you gonna be there and all of that? And the other thing is, what about the teachers? Are they gonna be allowed to be on their cellphones all day and you have to look at that?
Of course, this only addresses students, doesn't say anything about teachers.
But we did talk about teachers.
And the other thing is, so where does this policy go? Back to the student services or to the policy work group?
As I understand it, right now it's waiting for student services to finish discussing it.
Let's move on to the next one.
Okay. If I could, briefly, so one, one thing I would just ask the board to consider is this question of education, both of our families and of our staff, realizing that when students come back to school, there's a whole lot going on. So as we get through this process, just as a, as a consideration, maybe the board would consider an alternative implementation date so that it's not sort of immediate as we go forward. So then maybe some of the, the student services committee might wanna, wanna make sure that we have the opportunity to train our, our staff as well as very clearly communicate what the expectations are to our students. We'll need to have, you know, student assemblies and those sorts of things to be very clear about that. Because we don't, we wouldn't wanna come to the first day of school and all of a sudden everybody's, you know, getting suspended for three days and that's what I think. So just for your, for your consideration, I think that would be just something to talk about as well.
And that aligns nicely with what our principals are trained to do because at the beginning of the school year, within the first week or two weeks of school, they have expectation meetings with all their students and grade levels, that's age appropriate, that they outline the major rules. Of course, they don't go through every rule in the handbook, just like we don't know every law that we're accountable for upholding. But the, the major offenses, they go over and can set the expectation. Any changes to any policies like this, they could, at that time, to train them.
And the purpose of all these policies you're seeing is to create an environment conducive to learn. Anything which has, has been or could be a distraction to learning for our kids, we're trying to make sure that's taken out so they focus on the primary focus, which is learn, and learn, and learn. Go ahead, Dr. Day, second one.
Okay, next, let me say something about JFCA. You'll see a document entitled JFCA-d2. This, we already have a policy, JFCA, that concerns a procedure by which teachers can request- Um this, we already have a policy, J F C A, that concerns uh a procedure by which teachers can request. Permanent removal of a student from their classroom. Um this is um something that a lot of teachers told us through the survey we conducted in October, that they were not aware of. Or that they weren't, didn't understand how to use it. Um and w- we are not really proposing very much change to this. We have said that there needs to be a education process for the teachers to know what is, what this policy is and what this policy is not. It's not for just, uh because Johnny's misbehaving today, take him out for today. This, this is a request that they actually be taken permanently off the roll. Um the only change um that we ended up ma- recommending is that um whenever. That the, the school board student discipline committee will get summaries of incident reports and actions taken under this policy. We haven't changed the way uh it, it is to be implemented at all, other than reporting is to come to the school discipline policy. Um now, um.
Can you say, which policy are you on?
Very last.
Removal students from class.
You changed, you changed the order of them?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not reading them in the order that's on, that, that they're attached to the.
Basically, no change in policy, only changes the reporting process.
Uh let's see, let's see.
No, there's a change.
There was one small change.
It may not to me.
Yeah, we, it, the, a sentence in one of the state, it formally said, a student. May not be removed from class for disruptive behavior. Um unless two written incidents reports have been filed. And we changed it to, a student may be removed from class for disruptive behavior after two student incidents. Reports have been filed. I don't think the actual meaning of that is any different.
Just reads easier, reads.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a stylistic change. It doesn't change the import of the statement at all.
This policy has always given me problems. You're talking about, and, and, and no one has really ever been able to explain it. But there's a lot. Every report, so every referral? Every report, what report?
Every report of an incident under this policy. Every time a student requests a stu- I'm sorry, every time a teacher requests a student be permanently removed from their class. The principal then has to adjudicate that request, decide whether they can grant it or not. And where, that, what the proposed, or what the modified version says here is that a summary of all such reports go to the school board. Not necessarily a full report of every single incident, but a summary. This month, there were six such reports. Here are the decisions that were made.
If there's six reports, that means there's six students that have been taken out of the class.
No.
Okay, so what?
Six times a teacher asked uh for a student to be.
So, what happens if the teacher asks?
To decide if it can be implemented or not.
How often is, does that happen?
Disruptive behavior is one of the most frequent um referrals that we receive, so quite frequently.
And is there a definition of what disruptive behavior is?
Um there is, according to our S bar, um interfering with our environment in a way that distracts others. Some definitions of that are excessive talking, noise, off task. So, um the way that I interpret this policy for classroom removal isn't a removal from the class one time. But if a student is continuously disruptive to that classroom, then they would be removed from that class for the rest, remainder of the school year. Which would mean that that student, because we have to provide a free and appropriate education, that student needs to be placed in either another classroom. Um if there is no alternative classroom or other teacher at that school teaching that subject, or teaching that grade level. Um because of small numbers or uh staff reductions due to budget cuts, um that becomes a question of what do we do with that student? Uh where do they go? How are they educated? So, this policy has been in place. Uh it's not just unique to Lynchburg and previous division where I was at. Uh this is the policy, and it outlines what steps should be taken, because it's a pretty serious offense. And there's a lot of interventions need to be put in place and tried. And parents have to be informed and um engage with that, that um, that, that procedure. In order for a student to be removed from the classroom totally.
Do we ever look at, because I, uh you know, you were in the course also, um about the bright spots. The one student who um misbehaved in all classes, but one. And instead of looking at the reason why they misbehave in the others, they just looked at why they didn't misbehave in one class. And it was that, that teacher said hi to the, to the student. The rest of them said, you're going to get here and sit down, before the even child even got to the. So, once this is, once this happens, are this, that child labeled? I mean, so, uh just so, if it, so what happens to that? What's happening now to this? Once a, if a student is dis- disruptive, and a teacher is saying, I don't want you, that's like a rejection. And some of these students, they don't need any more rejections. They're saying, you are beyond my, my control. I can't do anything with you. I just want you out of here.
Yeah, I can say that this policy is enacted uh infrequently. Um since I've been here in Lynchburg in the last two years, maybe one or two times that a teacher has made this request. And in both instances, they were able to sit down and have a meeting with the parents and work through it with the students, and they were able to finish up the year. Um sometimes it was just a, a level of frustration, and then when you boil it down, there was no communication between the parent and the teacher. Um they were able to work things through. And in other cases, it was just um finding other interventions that needed to be put in place. Students were able to get day treatment support or services that weren't available before. So, um again, this is infrequent when this is enacted. And that could be because of a lack of awareness of teachers, and they don't know that they can request this. Um but what I've seen, not in just this division and others, that teachers want to take care of all students by name, by need, and are willing to work with them. Um you know, it's different than a business model, where if something's not working, you just discard it. Like, these are children, so they're going to continuously um make poor choices. And our teachers do a excellent job of being very patient and tolerant and working with them. So, um I understand the will of the board to support teachers in, in being able to control their classrooms, um and I fully support that as well. I'm just um simply reporting what I've seen over the last couple of years.
Um can I draw your attention to the paragraph that begins at the bottom of the first page of this document? It says, the principal shall determine the appropriate placement of any student removed from a class by a teacher. The principal may, and then there's five bullets here, the last one of which is, return the student to the class in accordance with the procedures below. So when this policy is invoked by a teacher, the case goes to the principal to decide what we, can we do. The principal may decide, well, the best thing to do is put them back in the class. Maybe you provide some additional support or coaching to the teacher, that might be a possibility. Um it's, it's not absolute. It gives the principal the power to decide what should we do with this student and this teacher. In this volatile situation that has led the teacher to make this request. It's not an absolute kicking them out of the class. It takes it to the principal to decide what the right thing to do is. And I think my response is, we need to trust the principals. They're the people with their feet on the ground and knowing both parties involved, what the alternatives are at that school for that student and for that teacher. And make the appropriate judgment. Where, okay, go ahead.
So why are we bothering with this then, if it's like this? Well, the other thing is, the paragraph, maybe four. In red, the administration will provide the school board student discipline, discipline committee. With collective summaries of incident reports and action taken under the term of this policy.
I can answer that.
Okay, what's, is student services not over this, or what?
So I was just gonna, um as, as a, the question was, could we transition that to be more consistent with the rest of our policy? To say, so the superintendent or designate will do these items, because that's typically how we do this work. But um just the, just a wording issue.
Instead of administration, say something other than that?
It's just say, typically, we say the superintendent or designate, but.
But to be inclusive of the disciplinary board, that fifth, uh only, once again, I've just heard a lot of um conversation. The fifth one says that uh with accordance to, uh the principal has the option. One of the things that I wanted to include in that was that the child, the student, wasn't returned to the same classroom within twenty-four hours. If there is a problem, and if principal goes, oh, yeah, okay, I find it funny too, you can, I'm using euphemism here. Um you can go back to the class. The kid goes back triumphant. He can do whatever he wants in the classroom. So there's got to be some provision, that there must be another, must here, that the student goes, doesn't go immediately back to the classroom. So, that was something that was taken out. But it's something that needs to be put back. I really think it needs to be considered.
Yeah, and I, and if, if I had given you my sort of full history of this, I would point out that um. Mr. DePaul uh is remembering what transpired at that committee meeting differently than I am, and I'm fallible too. And so, this version of it um, um was my modification of the policy. Based on what I understood the committee to have decided, but I may have been uh wrong in remembering what the committee decided. So, um that's what you're addressing. This was one aspect that you remembered differently than I did from the committee meeting. That's why, again, I think that um this needs further discussion to clear it up.
Absolutely, and tha- and that's why I want to present it to the board.
Right.
Because these, with, this is evolving. But I really think it's important that it be considered, and everybody here at least have an idea about it.
And the reason we asked for summaries was because the three of us that were on the discipline committee usually see those children. When they come through anyway, so we'll have a heads up about, as to, all right, so we've already seen their name on this summary or that summary. So, they're the children that usually come through.
Well, I mean, but that's provided by the student services anyway, the summary, so why make it a?
Well, we don't have a summary right now. We just have when we actually have a meeting. But we're, we're looking for a summary even before.
I, that's scary. That's just like looking at someone's record before you get it. You're already making judgments.
I think the reason, in my mind, for asking that the board's discipline committee get summaries, is that the school board is responsible for policy. That's why we're having this discussion. This policy is one that there've been some misunderstanding about. Uh we've got, had a lot of comments uh from teachers in the survey about it. So it's one that I think deserves the continuing attention of the board. And for the board to monitor this policy and contemplate whether it needs further adjustments, we need to know how it's working. And so we're asking for progress reports about the application of this policy. So that in the future, if it, if we see that, okay, there is a change that we should make, we'll be in a position to do that. We're just trying to be informed about how this policy is working.
And last point, um we have had children come and say, they like saying it's restorative, because the people where they would go back to. There are people that they're, they're, and they get in trouble with them. So they've actually enjoyed the restorative academy, because they can get things done, they can do their CTE, they can go on. So they're, they are protect, they want the protection for themselves.
And I think if you talk to teachers, that cooling off period with Doc, uh Mr. DePaul is talking about, is important. Because forty-five minute period, right? So, you're back in that period, then the whole attention goes back to that disruptive behavior. Which it took the teacher fifteen to twenty minutes to settle the class down, and then you bring that disruption back into the classroom right away. Uh go ahead.
And I think that's, we're trying, we're, we're hearing from the, the teachers, that we, they want this kind of support, because otherwise they feel not getting the support. So I understand. Cooling off period, um and I think the policy's in place. I do think, I understand your basis for saying the report. Because we want to be able to make modi- or the school board wants to be able to make modifications to this policy that are in place. Whether we make it more strict or make it more lenient and.
Or decide it doesn't work and we want to remove it altogether?
Right. So, that, and I, I understand, I, I see why you want the reporting, because it does make, it's, it's your barometer, to see what's going on.
Exactly, exactly.
Dr. Carter.
Think I forget, but um, I forget.
Aren't you glad you brought these things today?
And, and we don't want to make a bl- you're right. I don't want to, you don't want to blacklist a child.
Yes, no.
Label them, but, but we want to make sure the policy's working for everybody, and that's what I think the reporting helps with.
The ultimate attempt is to give teachers a way to deal with students that are continually disrupting their class. We have to give them something to turn to.
And hopefully, you don't have that many.
Right.
And I, it sounds like, you know, I don't know if we do or not, that are continually disrupting. Every child's going to have a, a bad day, so.
Okay. But the reporting also gives you a, a picture of the whole situation, not just of the child, also of the teacher.
That's right.
Also of the other students that are in that classroom. And as a principal, I need to be able to say, this teacher's really causing the problem.
Right.
Or it's the kids in this class that we, maybe we need to do some, you know, finagling with to make things work better. So, so having that, those pieces of paper in your hands gives the, the principal, because they're not going to be in that room every day, all day.
And, and if I could, to that point, I think um lots of interesting points. And I think one, one thing it is important just to consider is to ensure that we have hired professional principals to be in place. Um and not maybe saying exactly what you're supposed to do in running your building. Respect that, respect the, the will of the board in that. But just as a consideration, make sure that we're not telling every principal how they're supposed to run the building.
Wanted to make one count. Today's uh discussion is more informational. The deeper dive will be on twenty-eighth, when the ad hoc committee meets. So, if you see the red flags, what do you say?
You keep saying, it's the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Yes.
Twenty-seven. So please do plan to be there, and then, you know, as a board member, you can participate in the discussion. And that will be the deeper dive. This is more of a.
The problem is, we've probably got more here than we can deal with in one meeting on the twenty-seventh.
The other thing is, so what happens to the student? They just go to an office or? What hap- if they can't return, then what happens to the stu- these are things we need to.
That's for the principal to determine.
Okay, well, that's, all right.
And Dr. Carter, those are good questions. I think that for the committee, when they meet, to take in them all into consideration. Maybe you can email, since that's the purpose, to put those policies now, so you can email questions to Dr. Day. And or uh Mr. DePaul or Mrs. Lowery. When the committee meets, you know, they can, with Dr. Brown, look at what ifs. And if you need real-time answers, please be there.
So we really didn't put these on to be discussed tonight, so why are they? Why are they on here to be?
This is just informational.
So you're aware what's going on.
You're aware of what's going on. It's just like a status board.
We're getting your input on these.
Because what happens is sometimes, then when they come back, it's said, well, they've been on this for a long time. Now, why are you, why do you have any burn about it now? Let's just go ahead and vote. So, as long as that.
Work group about these.
Now, do they go back to the student services, or after the?
They're, as far as I'm concerned, they're still on an agenda for a student services policy work group.
Which, which I don't believe that it applies, because discipline committee is separate. So I don't believe it applies, but that's where you and I disagree in the policy of bringing them here tonight.
Well.
So I agree, you know, it's, I respect your opinion, but I just don't think that they have, they have a de- decision-making powers over discipline.
That's a separate, that's a, that's a, that's the best is, that's the issue. And I said that before, what group trumps the other?
I agree.
Because it's, is it the student services, the, that the professionals that we have hired, that know their, know what to do, or is it us?
Student services policy work group cannot form policy. They make recommendations to the board, and the board is the only unit empowered to make policy.
And we are. Take it from the experts that really know, and know all of the intricacies and all of the unintended consequences.
That's why the student, why the policy work groups are important. That's where we get input from all the different constituents, the people who might be affected by this. That maybe we as board members don't fully appreciate. That's why I think they're important. They don't, they don't make the final ruling, but they think about what we're considering and tell us, well, a better way to do this is this way. Or this is going to create a problem that you didn't realize. That's the function of the policy work groups. And then they bring back to us, hopefully, a version that we can deliberate on. Now, you want me to go on to the next? Okay, we've done two out of five, so.
Two minutes for other.
I told you, there's a lot to do.
You're doing a quick overview, so that people can come. Policy committee meeting on twenty-seven.
Okay, the next one is perhaps the most controversial. Uh J G D slash J G E. Uh the document, the, the file that was attached that has this is J G D hyphen J G E hyphen D two. So let me tell you about this one. This is our major policy about student suspension and expulsions. Uh the committee. The committee, what its goal was, is we wanted to strengthen the language regarding incidents involving physical violence, in particular, physical violence against teachers, as well as physical violence against those students. So, we approved a version that did go to the student services policy work group, and they considered it on June third. But following that, I had an email from Attorney Towns that raised some questions that this, the way it was written, or the way the version that went to them was written, might not be legal under Virginia law. The version you're looking at, JGD dash JGE dash D2, is a further modification that I made, that the discipline policy review committee has not looked at, but I, I made some modifications to try to satisfy the legal concerns, and I heard from Oak Towns this afternoon, that she thought this version of it did satisfy all the legal issues. But, I'm emphasizing the point, this version is basically due to me, it has not been vetted by the discipline policy review committee. The issues here, the main thing that we wanted to do is put in a statement that a, a student, you have to scroll way, kind of far down.
Number two.
I guess it's on page five. Should, or initially, we, we wanted to say that in those cases, a student should be immediately expelled. Now, the legal, potential legal problem with that, there's some disagreement about what the state law says. The state law regarding expulsions says that in general expulsion, what?
Go ahead, keep going.
That only in the cases of drug-related issues or gun-related issues can an expulsion be made, simply on the basis of the drugs or the guns. In all other cases, state law requires that a list of factors be considered, and they are the, the bullet points you see at the top of page five. It is state law, that those things be considered, when we're considering an expulsion, unless it's the case of a drug-related offense or a gun-related offense. And the way we had originally worded it, when it went to student services, did not allow that. It just said, if it's physical violence, they're expelled. And that's why Attorney Towns' interpretation of the law said the way we expressed it was illegal. And I agree with her reading of the law. Now, not everyone agrees with that. So, though I, I made a modification to say that, it's the red text you see here on page five, "In the case of assault, intimidation, battery, or threat thereof to a teacher, staff member, or volunteer, this student shall be recommended for expulsion." Not expelled, but recommended for expulsion, and the school board discipline committee will make its ruling after consideration of the above factors, making it clearly in compliance with state law. Now...
We do know.
You feel differently?
I do. The, as you read through the bullet points, it makes mention that such factors, no decision to expel a student shall be reversed on the grounds that such factors were not considered. So that totally blows the, the, the opinion of Attorney Towns out of the water, in my opinion. I didn't see anything in state stature, in Virginia statute or code, that said, implied what her opinion is. I wanted something a little bit more that said, yeah, you can do that, but this, in our own policy right here, takes it out. And there are situations where there is no absolute expulsion, because every expulsion is allowed an appeal. There, it's, it's in our policy. You don't just get expelled. You are put before the disciplinary board, and then we review it. I wanted to have stronger language. This really probably covers it with the paragraph we have there. Someone bring, even with the situation that we've been explained to when I was talking to security people, where a kid found a vape that contained THC on the playground, it was broken, he put it in his pocket, thought it looked cool, didn't want someone else to get it, he was gonna throw it away. Legally, he should have been expelled, because he was in possession of, of drug paraphernalia and drugs. He wasn't. He was, they just said, you don't do stuff like that. I don't think, there was any disciplinary measure put on him. So these are not, in the way that we're saying that they're just going to be out, because that is not the way the policies work. I think it's important that if a child brings a gun, student brings a gun to school, yeah, you're, you're gone. Threatens, bomb threats, yeah, you're gone. You'd, firearms, drugs, I get it. But that is just possession of something. They haven't done anything with it yet, yet that is an absolute. You harm a teacher, staff, or volunteer, you have done something. There needs to be immediate repercussions. There can be no leeway with that initial step. The appeal process through the disciplinary committee is granted, it's guaranteed. That is an absolute. So I wanted stronger language. What you have here probably covers it. I don't feel it's strong enough.
And you...
And I don't agree with Attorney Towns' interpretation. I can read just as well as anybody else. And just because I'm not an attorney doesn't mean I'm wrong and she's right, she's wr, or she's wrong and I'm right. I read, I read, and I couldn't find where that was considered to me. My suggestion is considered to be illegal. So if you can show me that, and state, we, we subjugate to the, to the state, to the Commonwealth, but it doesn't show, I have not seen, I'm not comfortable saying, oh, this would be illegal. We should have in there, an actual act of physical violence is, is to, for expulsion. That's my opinion, that's where I'm gonna stand, regard, you know, if the, if the board...
We have a difference in interpretation about the state law?
Yeah.
Doctor.
Go ahead, Dr. Carr.
Just to bring your attention to the, the code, and I think it's two, twenty-two-point-one-point-two-two-seven-point-zero-zero-seven.
Zero-six. I think it's zero-six.
Seven. After all of that, it says, nothing in this section shall be construed to require a student's expulsion, regardless of the facts of particular situation. And then the other one, regarding the drug paraphernalia, which is just interesting, even if they, that's twenty-two-point-one-point-two-seven-seven-point-zero-eight. It even says then, that, again, nothing, oh, it's cut off, that nothing in that section makes you, makes the school board require an expulsion.
So you need to look at the parent policy, which is two-two-point-one-dash-two-seven-seven-point-zero-six. Paragraph C says, "Recommendations for expulsions for actions other than those specified in twenty-two-point-one-two-two-seven-point-oh-seven and twenty-two-point-one-two-two-seven-point-oh-eight shall be based on consideration of the following factors." And the following factors are precisely the bullet points that are in our policy here. I read that as saying, unless it's guns or drugs, which are what those two exceptions are about, these factors shall be considerations on recommend, when a expulsion is recommended. And I think that's different than saying, an appeal after a student has been expelled. Technically, that's the way I read it. You have to con, it doesn't say you have to consider them on appeal, it says you have to consider them before expelling.
Right, yes.
That's where we differ.
Okay.
Right.
I get you.
Now, I'm, I don't really mean to have a debate here about the interpretation of the law. Again, this is just, this whole discussion is just intended to inform the board and the public where we are in this policy. We are trying to find a way to strengthen this policy, particularly so it can address instances of physical violence. My intent was that this would come back to the committee, and we would hash it out there, we probably would ask the attorney to come and help us with, and discuss the interpretation. Also, because this particular version of the policy that you're looking at was only written by me, the, the committee as a whole hasn't seen my particular revision of it. But this is the most recent version of it, and it's the one Dr. Atul asked me to put on the agenda for tonight. So we're just informing you of the status of this policy.
Perfect.
Let's move on to the next one.
Okay, next one. Let me close some of these windows here. Next one. The next two, I think, are pretty simple. KNAJ, the actual file is KNAJ dash D. This concerns relations with law enforcement, and all, the, the only real change here is that where there are mandatory reports to law enforcement about incidents at the school, that those reports should also go to the discipline committee of the school board. It's just a reporting requirement.
We also, we changed, law enforcement should not serve students with court papers on non-school-related matters, and we also included, law enforcement may serve students. That was an addition that you still have on that, too.
Yeah, we took out the "may" and made it "shall," didn't we?
Well, I see a "may" here. It says "may" on this. If it "shall," that's up to, we can compel, please, we cannot compel the police, so "may" if it is to their convenience. So I just wanted to make sure that that was...
So here's the, here's the paragraph in question. Here's the way I think we recommended it. The principal may report to local law enforcement officials any incident involving assault or assault and battery without bodily injury, la da da da. The principal shall report to law enforcement officials and the disciplinary committee of the school board. Yeah, this paragraph is contradictory, isn't it? Says, on one sentence hand, it says "may," and then the next sentence, it says "shall."
It says "without bodily injury" in the first one, and in the second one, it says "with bodily injury."
Oh.
Assault, yeah.
Okay.
The, so what did you just finish saying, Mr. DePaul, regarding the reporting?
The, on the service of process at school, that's the second paragraph.
No, I think you're right.
And so why do we want...
Contradictory.
Yeah.
And so...
It needs cleaning up.
Why do we want law enforcement to start to serve students court papers?
That, that's not the modification we're trying to make. We're trying to make the modification so the school board discipline committee gets reports of the same incidents that the law enforcement gets reports of.
No, according to that reading, I'm listening, I'm hearing what he said. Law enforcement's may, law enforcement may serve students with court papers on non-school-related matters during school operations without the permission of the division superintendent.
Well, that's not in red, it's in black, so is that a state thing that has been changed?
The reporting went down.
No, I didn't, I did that. And that was included in this. And the reason for that is that might be the only place where they can find them.
Well, we, we're not here to make their job as easier, I'm sorry to say.
So just to say, so this is a matter we deal with from time to time, and this is consistent with our, the way it's written is consistent with our agreement with the police department. It doesn't say you can't serve papers, it just means that we need to call downtown and get the, get the permission to, to do that at school. And I think that makes a lot of sense, to make sure that the principal knows that person's coming, to make sure that, we know, you know, it's not in the middle of field day or something, you know, whatever's going on. To me, it's appropriate to say, let's have some coordination before that occurs.
Additionally, our, our staff has relationships with students, and as a principal myself, there's the times where I was able to get a student to a secure location or to my office, as opposed to police coming and, you know, disrupting class and causing an escalated situation for...
That's why I said "may" in that "shall." So I agree, I think that's the best way to do it. I'm not saying that they're going to, you know, knock down doors and find the kid and serve a summons like that, or serve a warrant. I'm, I'm not trying to imply that, but to coordinate makes sense.
Without the permission.
So respectfully, I might, I might say, I think that the change to adding the "may" from "should not" says you can do that without talking to the superintendent.
Fair enough, we can work it. I, I can, I don't have a problem with changing that.
So I think, I think we have a great relationship with the police department, we know, you know, we, they, they know what the bounds are, and we, we don't have an issue necessarily with serving papers, we just want to make sure it's done in a coordinated way.
And from, and what you were saying with regards to that, it does repeat. I thought, I thought it was, it's not like without bodily injury, I thought the second one was with bodily injury, but the without is, you're right, it's, it does contradict.
Yeah, so we need to, again, this needs to go back to our committee to decide what we actually meant here.
Yep.
It, it still needs cleaning up.
One thing is, the, but, under the title, "Report to law enforcement officials," the principal shall immediately report to the law, law enforcement officials and the disciplinary committee of the school board. So, what, how, I know generally, they're already in the throes of the situation, and so many people are helping and coming in, so now they, who do they report to? The disciplinary committee, the chair, all three? Who makes the calls?
They could just do it to the chair, and the chair can distribute it to the committee.
And, so immediate means what?
Same as it does for law enforcement.
How practical is that?
In my respectful opinion, if, the, the major concern of administrator dealing with the situation is the safety of students, and then it's notification of parents and staff members, and then there's paperwork and cleanup to ensure that everything was done according to protocol, and everything's properly documented. And then I would recommend that there's notification, but to say immediately, call the police and tell the school board discipline committee, I don't feel as though that would be practical in my professional opinion.
Add onto that, perhaps...
And it's vague. Yeah. And that would be in our summaries.
Yeah. If I could add onto that, I think, just thinking about proper protocol and procedure, making sure that notification goes through the superintendent, not just directly from the principal to the, to the committee. I think that's just the way that we operate. And so I think just would ask that for your consideration.
Good points.
Let's move on to the next one.
Just a minute, I need to write that down, else it'll be gone in thirty seconds.
The human factor.
Okay, JFC. JFC, the file you have should be entitled JFC dash D. This is a student conduct policy, and again, the change is very minor. On the second page, prohibited conduct under the heading bullying, says, "The principal shall notify the disciplinary committee of the school board and the parent." Formerly, it just said the parent of any incident involved in an alleged incident of bullying, of the status of any investigation within five school days of the allegation of bullying. So again, it's just a reporting issue. If, if, if the parent needs to be notified, we're asking that the disciplinary committee be notified as well.
And that language of principal is already there, right, in the current policy?
This one says principal.
So if we change it to superintendent, there'll be a change from the current policy.
Yeah, lots of changes.
I think you just reword it, so that, it is, I think, very important that we maintain our, maintain our structure, so that, because you, you know, you think about, you have twenty-two principals around, so you'll be getting different perspectives.
So you're, you're suggesting that principal be changed to superintendent or designee?
No, I think, I think the principal can certainly report to the parent, but I think the report to the board should go through the, through the superintendent or the designee.
Okay.
If, if I may insert my humble opinion, again. Normally, when we are conducting bullying investigations, it's our school counselors that are doing that work, can do a wonderful job of it. So, I would recommend the principal or principal's designee be able to send that report, so, because normally it's the counselor sending it directly. And they do notify the superintendent via student services, because Laura Kessler and Zoe Stokes review every single bullying incident that comes through, read through it, make sure that everything was dealt with appropriately. Also, one major change that does need to happen is that, you know, there was a change in code of Virginia last year. You used to have to notify parents within five days. That was changed to twenty-four hours. That's a change that we made as a staff. It was just never adopted into policy. And so, instead of five days, that just needs to be changed to twenty-four hours.
So let me see if I understood...
Probably in July, so that we could get that...
I, I just want to confirm that I understood what you were just saying. You're suggesting that where it says the principal should notify, it should be the principal or designee? And, and then the reporting to the disciplinary committee of the school board should be the superintendent or designee?
Yes.
That's what you're suggesting?
Yes, sir.
Then twenty-four hours.
We have to keep it twenty-four hours.
And one more. Wake back up here, please.
Yes.
So this is BFCZ, and you should have a... So this is BFCZ, and you should have a, uh, let's see. No, I don't, I don't think you, oh, yes, you have BFCZ-three. Yeah, there it is, now I find it. So this was not something that came from the ad hoc discipline committee. This was just something that came to, from a recommendation that I made. I had made several that went directly to the Governance Policy Work Group, and this was the only one that the Governance Policy Work Group had had time to address. This was a number of suggestions that I made about how advisory committees to the school board are appointed and their, their terms and various things like that. And so there were a number of suggestions or concerns that came about when the Governance Policy Work Group considered it, and including some more requirements of state law. Some of our advisory committees are required by state law, and state law specifies things about their composition. And so I had sent a modified version to the Governance Policy Work Group, Hope Town, well, after that discussion, I made some further modifications. There were some timing issues, for instance, the, I think it's the Special Education Task Force starts its work very early. They, they can't wait until the board gets around to forming that committee, so they need to know their committee early. So I, I made some changes about when the terms, instead of saying the, the terms end at the beginning of, well, July one, I said instead, the terms end when the new committee is appointed, so that there's always a committee in place. So I made a number of changes. The most recent changes are the ones in blue here. The original changes I made are in red, if that's not confusing enough. I don't know that I can go through all of these changes. Again, this has to be looked at by the committee, but Hope Towns did look at this, and she told me she thought, after my second round of changes, this does meet all the legal requirements. She had a couple other suggested small edits, which I have not had a chance to even look at yet, but she said they were very small. So I don't know that I want to go through all the details of this. I'll let you read it. If you have comments about it, then please communicate to me and anyone else you wanna communicate to about it. And we can consider that whenever the Governance Policy Work Group meets again. There were three other things that I asked the Governance Policy Work Group to consider. One was the voting method for chair and vice chair, which we addressed earlier. The, another was the role of the legislative advocacy and, and community, L-A-R-C.
L.A.C.R.
I raised some issues about that, and then there's an issue about the role of parent liaisons on committees. Are they, do they, or do they not vote? Are they, or are they not counted for purposes of quorum? Those, we, I don't have any policy documents to show you, we're just waiting for the Governance Policy Work Group to have time to think about them.
Let me just make a comment about this policy. This involves community, so taking it out there today, so people can make comments during the public comment on July ninth or later. So that's the objective of this last policy, Dr. Day, discuss the advocacy committees. Dr. Carter?
This, the changes are a little scary, is just the fact that if the board views this become dysfunctional and unable to carry out its purposes, that's something that's really, I don't know how you would determine that, or unless the, the work group, the advisory group speaks something different than what we wanna hear. The other one is a liaison, for the board to be a liaison member, not a voting member, but to be the bridge between that advisory and here, and to bring back reports. And they already make reports to the board. So some of these things, it seems like we're trying to make sure whoever's on these committees speak what we want to hear, instead of them having the autonomy to do what they need to and make recommendations. We can take their recommendations or not. And I know some of the concerns with the Equity Task Force, they have always, not always presented things that we liked. The volunteer policy being one, and also with the, the suggestion that we make some of the changes to the transgender policy and/or to that E.C. Glad's grant, but they, they made their recommendations, they told us how they felt, and I really have a lot of serious issues with how this policy is being changed and tweaked and worded. And the advisory boards, aren't they specifically for the superintendent or work with the superintendent?
Their, their committees of the board, their advisory to the school board, that's the way our existing policy puts it.
I really have a lot of, I think this is a form of censorship and the fact that we want whatever those committees are to be made up of people that we deem are necessary and the right voices that we want to-
By existing policy, we appoint those boards, these committees.
A little scary. Not a little scary.
The reason I put that thing in about liaisons is because the Equity Task Force specifically asked for Dr. Gupta and I to visit. I know that you visited them, too. They have been, at least I understood, they wanted more board member presence at their, at their meetings. And so this was a response to a sentiment that I felt they were expressing. The other reason I put it in is because I think, at least for my own, speaking for myself, I don't always have a very clear idea on what those advisory committees are doing. I don't think I've been very engaged in paying attention to what these committees do. And I, I think for myself, I need a better connection to them, so I understand what they've discussed and why, so that when they bring a report to the board, I can understand what they're talking about.
Well, I feel the same way with those ad hoc committees that we've had. I don't know whether they're really communicating back to us, and they, they're from our board, so it's-
Well, we've just had, what, an hour's discussion of what the ad hoc committee did?
Yeah, and that's the first, but, and then the other thing is, uh, well, it must be getting late, 'cause I forgot again, but it may come back.
Thank you. And I think, I gotta, go ahead.
The only thing that I would say, looking at this policy, the only thing that, the Equity Task Force was the only advisory board that reduced their members from twenty to twelve. Everybody else kept twenty members, so, I mean, I would, I would vote to keep it as twenty, just for consistency purpose, but then you also have, from my understanding, from what I've seen from all of these advisory committees, all four of them, the Equity Task Force seems to be the most engaged in the board. I mean, I've been on the board for two years, and I've yet to see a school health advisory board come over.
Oh, don't say that. They come every year and present that big finding.
Okay.
See, that's what I mean about us not really being-
Absolutely, incorrect it, yep. So, but, the, I'm just speaking as a liaison for the Equity Task Force, of course, I've seen them engage, not just on the school board, standing in front of public comment, but I've also seen them engage out in the community, so, but, so my comment would be just not to reduce their members from twenty to twelve.
Go ahead.
I do, I now remembered, I think I was losing again, but prior, years ago, Dr. Brennan and Dr. Coleman were on the Equity Task Force, and it was such a problem. Not, not because they were on it, but because the makeup of the board then did not want anyone, any board members to sit on those committees. So that's a big three sixty.
So I'm not suggesting the board members be members of those committees?
Well, they weren't members. They, they were, well, they participated, they went to the boardman, the meetings, and I don't know whether they voted or not, I don't think so.
Okay. So our current policy regarding the Equity Task Force says it consists of twenty members. We appointed more than twenty members to that committee, I think it's twenty-four. And I have been told by at least one member of the Equity Task Force, as well as my own observation, the time I attended, is it's quite rare that most of those members are there. Usually, it's about half. So what's happening is-
You're probably right, but for the last meeting-
Can I finish?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what's happening is if there's a, a particular issue, the members that are animated about that issue will show up. A different issue, a different group of members show up. We're not getting represent, opinions from the full board. We're getting representation or opinions from those members of the board who, I don't know how to say it, are animated by that particular issue, but the other members of the board may also have opinions about that, but they're not participating. So my motive for reducing the membership is to try to get the full membership of that task force to be engaged in all of the task force's business.
I get that. If you wanna reduce it to, from twenty-four to twenty, then I'm cool with that.
It already is twenty, but we've exceeded it. We did not follow our own policy.
So we can reduce that down to twenty then? But if all the other advisory boards have twenty, we need to stick to that twenty and be consistent across the board. Don't, don't pick and choose which board we wanna, or which advisory committee we wanna reduce members based off what we don't wanna hear from them.
Some of the others, the, the membership is mandated by law.
I get that.
Equity Task Force is not. It only exists because we've chosen to put it there, so we have no legal obligation about the size of it. I'm just, my, my reasoning, which I just explained, is I think the board, that task force would function better with a smaller membership.
I agree to disagree.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just explaining why, my motive.
Right. You good?
Yeah.
Right. So the other thing I wanted to talk today was the special session on October second for reorganization. So Ms. Day has here a reorganizational meeting on July ninth. We'll do a regular meeting on July nine, but the reorganization meeting will be on July second. It should start at five, shouldn't take more than fifteen to thirty, twenty minutes to go over there, so.
We'll just do the elections of the chair, vice chair, appoint board clerk and vice clerk, or I should, maybe I should say deputy clerk, and the agent and deputy agent. There'll be no other business.
You wanted to, you talked about the agent, that's what you were saying?
Oh, no, just to make sure that was on there.
Oh, yes.
I wanna make sure I get appointed as deputy.
And that's all we would do on July two. And as I said earlier, my intent is to write to new board members, I'll copy everyone, just explaining what all that means and how the vote will be conducted.
What time?
Five o'clock, five P.M.
Five o'clock on the second, is that what I understood?
Yeah, five P.M., and we should be done, latest by five-thirty. It'll be the call to order, pledge allegiance, and that's it.
And I'll need a Zoom. I will need a Zoom for that.
He's gonna be in California.
Yeah, yeah, you'll be-
Yeah, I'm in California, yeah. I'll need a Zoom.
Is one more, yeah, so, is one more member who may do Zoom, but that's fine. Right? You good? So, Mistake, would you please modify this? The reorganization meeting will be July second, and July ninth is a regular meeting. And then the next session is on July twenty-third.
One other thing, still on this board's term, the Ad Hoc Discipline Policy Review Committee will meet June twenty-seventh. It's still in this board's term.
Three-thirty?
Three-thirty, yes.
Here in the boardroom?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other thing for the good of the order? Again, thank you, Dr. Carter and Mr. Frost, for all your service, all the good things you have done, for your journey with us for last, how many? Three years with you, at least with me, six years, and three more years with other people. So, and thank you all, and-
My wife, my wife did say, thank, thank the board for her official school board meeting visit. She valued everything you guys are doing, really has a great appreciation for all the hard work that everybody does on the board. And thank you.
Thanks, thanks, thank you to her for coming down and cheering you out.
That was sweet.